Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Thursday, February 16th, and we are at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. First item on our agenda is a silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have any remembrances this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I do. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools' education community who have passed away. Kenneth Killer, retired biology teacher at Willby High School, passed away on January 21st. Louise Bradley, former teacher in Waterbury Public Schools, passed away January 27th. Mahadivi Augustine, kindergarten student at Bucks Hill Elementary School, passed away on January 28th. Peter Jazinski, former substitute teacher at Kennedy and Crosby High School, passed away on January 29th. Teresa Norodozy, retired secretary for the Department of Education and mother-in-law of Board Commissioner Amanda Norodozy, passed away February 13th. Kyle Patrick, student at Crosby High School and former Wallist Middle School student, passed away this week.
Moment of silent prayer, please. Commissioner Navarro, would you lead us in the pleas of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Ireland?
Here.
Commissioner Norodozy?
Commissioner Navarro?
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone?
President Sweeney?
Here. Item number four on our agenda is communications. Commissioner Orso, could I have the motion, please?
Make a motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes of December 1st, 2022 workshop, December 1st, 2022 special meeting, and December 15th, 2022 rescheduled regular meeting. Secretary Serrano Adorno for the motion.
I motion to approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item six, public address to the Board. Commissioner Brown, could I have a motion?
I motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We do not have any speakers, however, so we can move on. Item number seven, superintendent's announcements. Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, members of our commission. It gives me great pleasure to give you some updates on the current status of our district as of most recent times. If you will turn your attention either to your handout or your computer or on the screen, you will see that there was a legislative summit sponsored by the Greater Waterbury Chamber. I attended this on February 13th. During that time, while the governor was scheduled to speak, the governor was unable to be there, but there were two guest speakers at this particular event, the Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and the Attorney General, William Tong. Some of the topics discussed were economic development, transportation, energy and environmental taxes and spending, health, human services, and workforce development. We did hear some great news from the Speaker of the House with very much encouragement that the educational cost sharing will be funded fully, and so we expect to hear more and will certainly keep updated as to when that becomes, you know, the funding that we can depend on for future spending and future opportunities to continue to improve our district. So that was very much good news, and I know that commissioners have worked very hard. And Commissioner Sweeney, I know that you spoke very eloquently about the necessity of that having to be a part of our funding formula, and I know all of you have been great advocates for the educational cost sharing, and I think you're going to get to see it happening. One of the highlights of my day, and highlights of my life actually, is the Student Recognition Award. I've had the opportunity on Friday of last week and nearly every day this week, and I will finish tomorrow as a matter of fact, visiting all of the schools in Waterbury Public Schools to announce and to share with the student who is being recognized as the outstanding student recipient of the superintendent's recognition award. I have been to nearly all schools. I believe I have six or seven schools to finish tomorrow. There are 39 recipients total. Those are just amazing young people that have been selected by their teachers and our principals and their schools, not only for their academic abilities, but also for their service and their ability to give back to their community and give back to the peers that they are role models for each and every day in their schools. It's truly a highlight. I would like to remind everybody that on February 20th and 21st, Waterbury Public Schools and Central Office will be closed in observance of President's Day and Lincoln's Birthday. And I want to share last and finally, some CAPE highlights. CAPE is very interested in Waterbury Public Schools, all the school districts in Connecticut, to present some of the highlights that we're celebrating. And so Commissioner Brown, as President of CAPE, as well as Belin, our communications director, was very instrumental in preparing this. It's a video. It will be submitted to CAPE, and all of our commissioners are going to be able to see some of the great things that we're celebrating with CAPE so that they will know all of the wonderful work that each and every one of you does as board members, as commissioners, and also our students and our teachers and staff. So if you look at the video, you will see what will be submitted to CAPE. Hi, I'm Dr. Verna Ruffin, Superintendent of Waterbury Public Schools. Here at Waterbury, our mission is to inspire and to prepare every student to be successful in and beyond the classroom. Our students are provided with high-quality learning, resources, a diverse community, eager and responsive educators, and opportunities that expand beyond our classrooms. Our staff works tirelessly to provide our students a high-quality education with excellent and creative educational experiences. Here at Waterbury, our educators have the opportunity to advance in their career through professional development with our Waterbury U program. Here at Waterbury, we are doing great things. Follow us on social media to learn more about our district. Presentation to the Board this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Ruffin? Okay. President's comments. Tonight, I will just briefly remind everyone, CAPE Day on the Hill is March 8th. It starts at 8:30 at the Capitol. If anyone is interested in going, if you would please let Carrie know so that we can get a count of how many people are going. Okay. And next is our student representative comments, and we have Grace Henderson and Eric Arifi. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you would just introduce yourselves, your grade level, and your school, and then you can go right into your presentation.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. My name is Grace Henderson, and I am the junior representative.
And I am Eric Arifi, the senior representative, and we are both here tonight representing Waterbury Arts Magnet School.
Academic updates. FASB nights are occurring more frequently to encourage students and seniors to apply, held by our school and a variety of third-party sponsors. Varsity tutors have proven to be a very helpful resource for the student body in terms of academic aid and preparation for the SAT in March taken by the 11th graders, as well as the PSAT in April for the grades nine and 10 are currently undergoing.
On the topic of preparation, several clubs have been added in aid for academic support, including the English, Math, and Science Club after school for middle school and attempts to increase smart balance scoring. We have also added a 5:30 math SAT prep club, which continues to gain popularity and proven beneficial along with the SAT English prep club. There has also been a very successful rose sale for DECA in which we sold out all the roses for Valentine's Day.
Concerts and performances. A look into some of our arts departments. We have two productions currently under the works, after our first main stage production of Anything Goes at the Palace Theater in December. We have the student-directed She Kills Monsters in the Apron Stage and Footloose the Musical being taken place at the Palace Theater. Promotional videos for Footloose the Musical have been recorded and will be shown during the intermission of the Citywide Talent Show. The WAMs course is participating in the citywide showcase, performing as both backup singers for elementary school students and has some featured soloists from WAMs. After successful winter concerts, all of our performance departments are in preparation for the spring showcase in May at the Palace Theater. The Triumph Music Honor Society held their Valentine's Day coffee house right here, and it was a huge success. And our Black History Month performance is scheduled for February 28th.
Now, taking a look into classrooms, we are starting a new UConn Medical Science class next year called Health Science for Professionals alongside our present UConn Medical Terminology class. Recently, three UConn Medical Terminology students were selected for the high school mini-medical/dental school program, creating opportunities for students who desire to get into medical field through lectures and demonstrations. We also recently had a Voice for Change event. Our first activity was a hula hoop event in the school's gymnasium for students and staff, and we will continue to do more activities today.
Advertisements. WAMs have seen an increased number of applicants for a number of reasons, one of which being the new advertising on busing, billboards, and a commercial on Channel 3 News.
Recently, one of our school's dance students, Ms. Hall Greens, won the honor roll award from CCSU for the 2022-2023 school year.
Transitioning into the school student accomplishments, two WAM scholars received a certificate from Congresswoman Johanna Hayes for the GLI program, which meets here in the College and Career Research Center in collaboration with the TAF School. Six students were also accepted into the CMEA Regional Music Festival, and all who auditioned from WAMs were accepted into the CMEA All States 5 Out of 5, which was so cool.
Now, for some school accomplishments, we've seen an increase in attendance rate in both middle school and high school between our different initiatives, including pizza and ice cream parties, to promote better attendance. Also, if a student is out for less than three days from February 1st to the end of the school year, the parent will receive a pair of wireless earbuds as a reward through parent liaison money to encourage improved student attendance. We also recently had a new sign put in at the front of the school, along with 53 new lights all around the outside of the school and an increase in cameras for safety. We've also been working on the school daily as intercoms have been shorting out and quickly put to repairs, and an all-new updated fitness center to promote healthy lifestyles and encourage students to be healthy. Our performance spaces such as large dance, HR, apron stage, drama classroom, and recital hall are all going to receive new lighting renovations soon. Some issues we want to bring up was the MBC Mastery Base Credit rework. For earning the Mastery Base Credit, we would like to see a choice offered so a student can choose if they would like to create a project or compose a portfolio alongside the reflection to improve scores and encourage students to think outside the box rather than just continuous repeating reflection.
To decrease hallway traffic and to improve the rate of students getting to class on time, unit directional systems
Ritter and the Attorney General William Tong. Some of the topics discussed were economic development, transportation, energy and environmental taxes and spending, health, human services, and workforce development. We did hear some great news from the Speaker of the House with very much encouragement that the educational cost sharing will be funded fully. And so we expect to hear more and will keep, certainly keep updated as to when that becomes, you know, the funding that we can depend on for future spending and future opportunities to continue to improve our district. So that was very much good news. And I know that commissioners have worked very hard. And Commissioner Sweeney, I know that you spoke very eloquently about the necessity of that having to be a part of our funding formula. And I know all of you have been great advocates for the educational cost sharing. And I think you're going to get to see it happening. One of the highlights of my day, and highlights of my life, actually, is the Student Recognition Award. I have had the opportunity on Friday of last week and nearly every day this week, I will finish tomorrow, as a matter of fact, visiting all of the schools in Waterbury Public Schools to announce and to share with the student who is being recognized as the outstanding student recipient of the Superintendent's Recognition Award. I have been to nearly all schools. I believe I have six or seven schools to finish tomorrow. There are 39 recipients total. Those are just amazing young people that have been selected by their teachers and our principals and their schools, not only for their academic abilities, but also for their service and their ability to give back to their community and give back to the peers that they are role models for each and every day in their schools. It's truly a highlight. I would like to remind everybody that on February 20th and 21st, Waterbury Public Schools and Central Office will be closed in observance of President's Day and Lincoln's Birthday. And I want to share last and finally, some CAPE highlights. It is the CAPE is very interested in Waterbury Public Schools, all the school districts in Connecticut, to present some of the highlights that we're celebrating. And so Commissioner Brown, as President of CAPE, as well as Belin, our Communications Director, was very instrumental in preparing this. It's a video. It will be submitted to CAPE. And all of our commissioners are going to be able to see some of the great things that we're celebrating with CAPE, so that they will know all of the wonderful work that each and every one of you does, as board members, as commissioners, and also our students and our teachers and staff. So if you look at the video, you will see what will be submitted to CAPE.
Hi, I'm Dr. Verna Ruffin, Superintendent of Waterbury Public Schools. Here at Waterbury, our mission is to inspire and to prepare every student to be successful in and beyond the classroom. Our students are provided with high-quality learning, resources, a diverse community, eager and responsive educators, and opportunities that expand beyond our classrooms. Our staff works tirelessly to provide our students a high-quality education with excellent and creative educational experiences. Here at Waterbury, our educators have the opportunity to advance in their career through professional development with our Waterbury U program. Here at Waterbury, we are doing great things. Follow us on social media to learn more about our district.
... to the Board this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Ruffin? Okay. Okay. President's comments tonight. I will just briefly remind everyone, CAPE Day on the Hill is March 8th. Starts at 8:30 at the Capitol. If anyone is interested in going, if you would please let Carrie know, so that we can get a count of how many people are going. And next is our student representative comments. And we have Grace Henderson and Eric Arifi, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you would just introduce yourselves, your grade level and your school. And then you can go right into your presentation.
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. My name is Grace Henderson, and I am the Junior Representative.
And I'm Eric Arifi, the Senior Representative. And we are both here tonight representing Waterbury Arts Magnet School.
Academic updates. FASB nights are occurring more frequently to encourage students and seniors to apply, held by our school and a variety of third-party sponsors. Varsity tutors has proven to be a very helpful resource for the student body in terms of academic aid and preparation for the SAT in March taken by the 11th graders, as well as the PSAT in April for the grades nine and 10 are currently undergoing.
On the topic of preparation, several clubs have been added in aid for academic support, including the English, Math and Science Club After School for Middle School, in attempts to increase smart balance scoring. We have also added a 5:30 Math SAT Prep Club, which continues to gain popularity and proven beneficial along with the SAT English Prep Club. There has also been a very successful rose sale for DECA, in which we sold out all the roses for Valentine's Day.
Concerts and performances. A look into some of our arts departments. We have two productions currently under the works, our first, after our first main stage production of Anything Goes at the Palace Theater in December. We have the student-directed She Kills Monsters in the Apron Stage and Footloose the Musical being taken place at the Palace Theater. Promotional videos for Footloose the Musical have been recorded and will be shown during the intermission of the Citywide Talent Show. The WAMs course is participating in the Citywide Showcase, performing as both backup singers for elementary school students and has some featured soloists from WAMs. After successful winter concerts, all of our performance departments are in preparation for the Spring Showcase in May at the Palace Theater. The Triumph Music Honor Society held their Valentine's Day Coffee House right here, and it was a huge success. And our Black History Month performance is scheduled for February 28th.
Now, taking a look into classrooms, we are starting a new UConn Medical Science Class next year called Health Science for Professionals alongside our present UConn Medical Terminology Class. Recently, three UConn Medical Terminology students were selected for the High School Mini Medical slash Dental School Program, creating opportunities for students who desire to get into medical field through lectures and demonstrations. We also recently had a Voice for Change event. Our first activity was a hula hoop event in the school's gymnasium for students and staff, and we will continue to do more activities today.
Advertisements. WAMs have seen an increased number of applicants for a number of reasons, one of which being the new advertising on busing, billboards, and a commercial on Channel 3 News.
Recently, one of our school's dance students, Ms. Hall Greens, won the Honorable Award from CCSU for the 2022-2023 School Year.
Transitioning into the school student accomplishments, two WAM scholars received a certificate from Congresswoman Johanna Hayes for the GLI program, which meets here in the College and Career Research Center in collaboration with the TAF School. Six students were also accepted into the CMEA Regional Music Festival, and all who auditioned from WAMs were accepted into the CMEA All States 5 Out of 5, which was so cool.
Now for some school accomplishments, we've seen an increase in attendancy in both middle school and high school between our different initiatives, including pizza and ice cream parties, to promote better attendance. Also, if a student is out for less than three days from February 1st to the end of the school year, the parent will receive a pair of wireless earbuds as a reward through parent liaison money to encourage improved student attendance. We also recently had a new sign put in at the front of the school, along with 53 new lights all around the outside of the school, and an increase in cameras for safety. We've also been working on the school daily as intercoms have been shorting out and quickly put to repairs, and an all-new updated fitness center to promote healthy lifestyles and encourage students to be healthy. Our performance spaces such as Large Dance, HR, Apron Stage, Drama Classroom, and Recital Hall are all going to receive new lighting renovations soon. Some issues we want to bring up was the NBC Mastery Base Credit rework. For earning the Mastery Base Credit, we would like to see a choice offered, so a student can choose if they would like to create a project or compose a portfolio alongside their reflection to improve scores and encourage students to think outside the box, rather than just continuous repeating reflection.
To decrease hallway traffic and to improve the rate of students getting to class on time, unit directional systems, as we had during COVID, may be a beneficial inflammation.
Thank you, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, nice.
Very nice. Nice report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the students?
Great job.
Rocco, come on. I see the face.
I'm just very proud of both of you. You did a great job, and it's just, I'm just very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown.
Can I see, our principal is here tonight, Principal Albini, who should be very proud of your students. Thank you for sharing them with us.
Thank you. Very, very great. It was a great presentation, and I like the suggestions that you put at the end. Always want to hear from the students about what really matters to them. So the statistics are nice, but I like hearing about where your thoughts are on how you can better enjoy your education. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. And we do have an add tonight. Vice President Hernandez for the add.
I move to add to the agenda. Item number 14.8, Amendment 2 to the agreement with Soraco Mechanical Services Incorporated for mechanical upgrades for three high schools.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The item is added. Vice President Hernandez, could I have a motion to take us into executive session?
I move to convey into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We are in executive session. We will be away from the table for three minutes. Okay.
Where are we going?
Thank you. Vice President Hernandez, would you bring us back from executive session, please?
Motion to return to the regular order of business with the record reflecting that there were no votes taken.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And we are back to the regular order of business. And just a brief apologies to all of you in the audience sitting, waiting for us to come back, but we did have some burning issues that needed to be covered, so I appreciate your patience. Okay. All right. So next on our agenda, item 11-1 and 11-2, Vice President Hernandez.
I apologize. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on School Personnel moves that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Allison Finley as Supervisor of Special Education effective immediately.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Madam President. It's with pleasure that I recommend Allison Finley as Supervisor in Special Education. Allison joined us as a supervisor, an acting supervisor, over the summer, and then she's continued working with us as we really needed to assure that all of the needs of our students were being met in the district. She did this under an interim basis, and then when the position became officially available, it is with great pleasure that I recommend her as a permanent supervisor in special education for Waterbury Public Schools.
Thank you, Doctor. Anyone else? All right. We have the motion. We have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Allison, will you come up and say a few words to the Board?
Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Student Representatives, and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. Again, my name is Allison Finley, and I'm very excited to be here tonight. I've been with the district since 2014 as a special education teacher, and as Dr. Ruffin said, since the past summer as interim special ed supervisor. I'd really like to personally thank Dr. Ruffin and Mr. Pabon for working with me for the past year and having faith and believing in me. And I'd also like to thank my husband and my children for their support during this transition and the awesome special ed department that we have here in Waterbury. It's a great team, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Allison.
Yes.
Vice President Hernandez, 12.2.
11. item 11.2.
I'm sorry, 11.2. 11.2, sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on School Personnel moves that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Alice Heinz.
Second.
As Supervisor of Special Education effective immediately.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. With pleasure that I would like to recommend Alice Heinz. Ms. Heinz has previously worked in a middle school as well as high school, and has worked as a middle school special education teacher. She's worked as an elementary special education teacher, and she previously served as a pupil service specialist. She comes to us with experience in several other districts, and most recently in New Britain, and it's a pleasure that I recommend her to join our team.
Any other comments? Is she here, Doctor?
Yes. Allison, will you come up? Welcome.
I'm sorry, Allison, they need to take a vote. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sweeney, Vice President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Student Representatives, and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. My name is Alice Heinz, and I'm excited for this appointment of Supervisor of Special Education. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to become a part of the Waterbury Public Schools team because of my commitment to students and families in urban school districts. When I began my career in education in Meriden, where I spent 17 years, I set out to be the educator that I needed as a child. For me, it begins with recognizing students' social, emotional needs and building relationships. Students and their families deserve the utmost respect and the best that we can provide. It is our duty as educators to provide supports and to develop the highest quality opportunities that we can for our students. We must be part of the solution, and that is achieved through first-rate collaborative practices. I know that the Waterbury Public Schools staff are very passionate and knowledgeable about what they do. They know that once authentic relationships are forged, that students will and can learn. Please accept my sincere gratitude for this opportunity to proudly serve the family, students, and staff of Waterbury Public Schools. And I'd like to thank the Board for your consideration, and Mr. Pabon. And I'd also like to thank my husband for his undying support. Thank you all.
Do you have family here, Alice? You have family here?
Oh, yes, my husband.
Don't you ask him to stand, please? Thank you for being here. Thank you.
I want to apologize, and her name is Alice Heinz.
So glad you're here. Okay. Item number 12 is the Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from this consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will read the Consent Calendar. 12.1, Committee on Finance, request approval of an assignment and assumption agreement between Edgenuity Incorporated and Image Learning LLC. 12.2, Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection, DEEP, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, PURA, Public Educational and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account Grant. 12.3, Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Ben Brown's Academy to provide educational services for children with disabilities. 12.4, Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Yale University on behalf of its Cedarhurst School to provide educational services for children with disabilities. 12.5, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 12.6, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Commissioner Ireland for the motion, please.
Request, and the amount of $158,375.
Been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. 14.2, Commissioner Orsa.
The Committee on Finance moves that the Waterbury Board of Education approve Amendment Number 1 to the agreements with the following for sub-grantee services under the School Readiness Program, subject to any non-substantive changes, approved by the Corporation Council's Office. The ARC Child Development Center Incorporated, Catholic Charities Incorporated, Children's Community School, Children's Village Incorporated, Easter Seals Children's Academy, and Children's Center, the Center for Early Childhood Education at Nogtuck Valley Community College, New Opportunities Incorporated, Mural Moore Child Development Center, TEAM Incorporated, Slocombe School, Greater Waterbury YMCA.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. 14.3, Commissioner Orsa.
Item 14.3.